We call it meeting doors, a regular workshop meeting. You've been invited with a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. And I entertain a motion to adopt this agenda.
So moved?
So. Any discussion? All in favor, signify. I see an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have an adoption of minutes and consent items. There's four consent items. And hopefully, everybody's read them and good with them. And we have minutes from the February 20th, 2024, regular meeting.
Move approval for the minutes and the four consent items?
Aye. Discussion? All in favor, signify. I see an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, first, I have a note. Josh, you're going to introduce this, please.
Thanks, Mayor. We're getting ready to have our presentation from Amy Vittner. She is with First Tryon. They're our financial advisor. Sabrina's going to give us a little bit of kickoff, and then Ms. Vittner's going to have at it.
Good evening. We hired First Tryon back in the summer, last summer, to work with us through the process of issuing revenue bonds for the West Sharon Regional Truck Station, Truck Sewer. As you know, we had some ARPA funding that we were originally going to use for the project, and then we moved it. And so now we'll be issuing some revenue bonds to fund that. But in addition to that, and a large part of the reason why Amy's here tonight is to talk about the capital planning model, which, as you're very familiar with the water sewer rate model, so I just kind of wanted to give a brief explanation as to what the model is. It is very similar to the water sewer rate model. We use it the same way that we use that to determine rates by, you know, we put in all of our revenues, our expenses, our capital projects, and that helps us determine if our rates are sufficient to cover those expenses. And so what the capital planning model does is the same thing, but on the general fund side. And we haven't had anything like that in the past. So this will enable us to plan for future projects, like the recreation, the 400 acres. It helps us know, you know, what our debt capacity is with that. It looks at the same thing that the water sewer rate model does, our debt coverage ratios. Instead of what the water sewer rates need to be, it looks at what our tax rate might need to be. So it's just a good planning tool as we move forward with some large projects. And so with that, I'm going to have Amy go ahead.
Great, well, thank you for having me here tonight. Is my presentation effective? Oh, here we go. Great.
Yep.
Oh, great. Okay.
Did nothing like that.
Cheats everybody.
Where's our technical black?
Lisa sees it.
Okay.
She'll reload it.
Okay.
Do you have any copies?
What? Ah, I did not bring one copy here, but maybe while we're reading for that, I can give you a little bit of introduction of our firm and what we do. So Sabrina mentioned, I'm Amy Vittner with First Tryon Advisors, and we basically serve as municipal financial advisors for cities and counties around the state, working a lot with entities like yourself, and G-It's Back. Really with any kind of capital or debt-related matters. So one of our core competencies that we do is helping you issue the debt. So the debt implementation, the other large piece that we do is the capital planning side of things. So we'll be talking a little bit more about that this evening.
You need difference.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. All right. This looks a little bit, but all right. So I'm going to, so I'll be talking about, a little bit about your debt capacity on the general fund side, and then we'll talk a little bit about the revenue bonds that you'll be issuing too. So first, just on the debt capacity for your general fund. In general, when you think about debt capacity, you know, it's important to define what that means. It could mean a lot of different things to, so it really is defined by what variables and what parameters do you decide to implement? So some of the different parameters that we look at are what of your, what kind of fiscal policies have you adopted? What's your bond rating sensitivity? So as you're issuing new debt or funding new projects, you want to make sure that your bond rating stays intact and healthy, because the higher bond rating that you have, the lower the debt cost that you have. And then also, you know, consideration is appetite to consider, you know, new revenue sources. So your debt capacity could be really high if you are willing to, you know, raise revenue in the form of taxes or, you know, some other revenue source. Or, you know, more often, our clients will ask us, we want to fund all these projects, but we don't want to, you know, implement a new tax rate. So what is our capacity within our existing revenue sources? So to help us to determine that, we've, as Sabrina mentioned, we put together what we call our capital planning model, which takes all the different, a bunch of different factors from your existing debt and how that rolls off, your current credit profile, financial performance. So we look, we basically put in all of your audits for the last five years and project those out, as well as your CIP and future capital needs. So the first thing we did was we looked at your existing debt impact. So what does your existing debt look like? Right now, the city has about $13.1 million of debt outstanding, the maximum annual debt service, the peak debt service is in fiscal year 2024 at $2.6 million. And one way we measured capacity is what portion of your budget is currently going towards debt service? And we like to measure that in pennies, so that's conceptually, that's one way, an easier way to think about it. So right now, 5.7 cents of your budget is going, 5.7 pennies of ad valorem taxes are going towards debt service. So when we think about capacity, and you look at kind of the red line on that bottom left-hand chart, that's the equivalent of 5.7 pennies, growing at a very conservative 1% quarter rate a year, and the bars represent the annual debt service payments that you're making. The difference between that red line and those bars is really the capacity that you have. So before we consider larger-scale projects, we first wanted to look at what are your existing needs? We know that you routinely issue very, you know, short-term debt issues for vehicles and equipment. So we wanted to first make sure your existing needs were taken care of. So we layered in a variety of, you know, short-term financings over the next several years to see what that did to your capacity. And those are structured over a five-year periods of very short financings. So those could be, you know, police vehicles. I think the larger one in 2027 is a fire apparatus. So, you know, just layering all those in, you'll see very quickly, the bars get above that, the red line there. And so the debt in the future is projected to be the equivalent of four pennies more than where you are currently, have your current debt service. But that doesn't mean that this isn't affordable. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. So as we define capacity, so we want to look at, you know, we wanted to establish what metrics do we want to measure? And the two metrics that we often look at are available fund balance, so you're, as a percentage of budget. We're recommending a target that you don't, don't go below 25%. And I think that's right in line with the recent fiscal policy that you've adopted, establishing a minimum benchmark of 25% fund balance. So, and that's in line with, with a lot of other cities around the state. The city is currently performing at about 45%. So you have certainly some capacity there. And then the other metric we want to look at is the debt service as a percentage of operating expenditures. That is, we're recommending a not-to-exceed amount, not-to-exceed benchmark there of 15%. Right now, so the way we look at that is, you know, rating agencies, they're looking at, you know, recommended range of 10 to 15% for a double-A rated entity. You all are rated a double-A two as a, if you issued GEO bonds. Your limited obligation bonds are rated one notch below that at double-A three. So, you know, kind of staying within that 10 to 15% range with a goal of staying, not exceeding 15%, we think is reasonable. You're currently at 6.4%, so a pretty good, good level there. Now, we looked at a variety of scenarios. So the first one we'll look at is no new debt. So if you don't issue any future projects, what does that, what are your, what does that do to your available fund balance levels, as well as your, your debt service as a percentage of expenditures threshold? Then we looked at a $10 million borrowing, a $25 million borrowing, and a $50 million borrowing. Those, those future borrowings are structured over a 20-year period, which is in line with what the local government commission will allow you to do over 20 years, level principal, just a conservative 4.5% interest rate. Right now, if you were in the market, your interest rate would be probably closer to about three, three-quarters or closer to 4%.
That strictly on GEO bonds?
On GEO bonds, yes. So the first scenario is basically picking up from a couple of slides back. So if we looked at where you would be, assuming just the regular routine vehicles and equipment financings that you do, you know, we mentioned that would require, you know, four additional pennies as a part of your budget. But when we, and so I'll just preface by saying, none of these scenarios actually include any new tax revenue in there, so this includes all your, your current, you know, tax rate. But if you look out into the future, we would say, yeah, you'd know this would, you'd take a higher, would require a larger portion of your budget go to debt, but it looks like it would be very affordable. You're staying well below that 15% maximum on the debt service to operating expenditures ratio, and your unassigned fund balance, more importantly, is continuing to grow. So you're not eating into that capacity anymore. So basically, that tells us that you are, you know, you're projecting, based on historical performance, you would still have surpluses in your budget that you'd be able to, you know, afford, you know, taking on some additional debt. So let me go through that same exercise with a $10 million borrowing. So now, the amount of pennies as a part of your budget is, you know, 6.1 additional pennies, but you're still, you know, your, your debt service as a percentage of expenditures is starting to increase a little bit. It's about 12%, and then your assigned fund, unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your budget, it is still well above the 25% target, but it's starting to flatline a little bit, so it's no longer growing like it was before. So looking at a $25 million borrowing, you know, we're still, it's, you know, still below the 15% target, and you're, so now we're looking at about 8.9 pennies of ad valorem equivalent on debt service. So your actual max annual debt service is up to about, you know, just about $7 million a year. And your unassigned fund balance, it's still well above the 25% looking out over the next 10 years, but it's starting to decline a little bit. So it's something that, something that we'll want to look at. We're not overly concerned about that, because we have some very conservative assumptions built into the planning model. So as you compound conservative assumptions, you know, as you, when you look out further on the, on the, out into the future, you know, you're, that's, that's having some impact there. But we would say 25 million is probably still affordable, still within range. We're not requiring, doesn't look like it would require any new, you know, any tax increases or any new additional revenue. But it's something just to be, keep an eye on that, on the side of fund balance as you start to look out into the future. And then we looked at a $50 million borrowing, and again, here is, you know, pretty much doubling from, you know, 25 million. And this is where you start to get above that 15% threshold on the debt service to operating expenditures. And the unassigned fund balance is starting to decline a lot more quickly. So, you know, we would say, you know, as you approach, you know, larger-scale borrowings, you probably would want to look in more detail at other revenue sources that could be available out there, whether it's additional tax revenue or sales tax revenue, what have you. I would say the, the other thing we have not factored into here, and it's something we'd work closely with you on, is if there are any operating impacts that, you know, would be required. So, so for instance, if you were to build a new, you know, hypothetically, a new fire station, you might have new personnel that would go with that. So we'd want to make sure that those kind of operating expenses that are factored into as you start to look at some of these debt issues, so. So any questions on that so far?
Where's the $150 million slot?
Excited to stop. Clip over our head. And just to give you a sense of where you would be compared to some peers around the state, we looked at, you know, the first one is unassigned fund balance as a percentage of revenues. The orange represents where the city of Jacksonville is today. The gray is where you would be after the $50 million issuance, so, in, in the peak year, and kind of the most stressed year. And you're at, you know, to decline to 25%, but you'll see there on the page, you know, you're kind of right in, in good, in good company with most of those other double-A issuers around the state. On the debt service as a percentage of expenditure side, you know, where you are at 6.4% is kind of right in the middle of, of most of the, the peers on there. And then, you know, going out to 15%, that would certainly put you more on the, on the higher end, if you were to, to take on that level of debt. And then we threw in there just debt per capita, because another metric that folks like to look at. So, you know, if you took your amount of debt outstanding and divided it by your population, what would that look like? And you're performing, I think, pretty well on that one right now. It's only $176 per citizen. And, you know, in a pro forma basis, if you were to issue 50 million, that would grow to $829, you know, per, per person, but it is, you know, little, little elevated compared to some of these other peers, but you've certainly seen others around the state that are much higher than that, so. And so really, just to summarize, city, we think, can afford up to about 25 million, pretty easily, based on your existing resources and capacity levels. If you were to approach a $50 million borrowing, you know, that would start to look at, you would, your budget would be a little bit more stressed from that, and we would want to look a little more carefully about the assumptions and other opportunities for revenue that might be out there. And then, I think you've already, you've done a good job in adopting a fiscal policy on the, you know, for your fund balance levels, but, and I think you're working on some, some policies on the debt side, so that'll be good. And, and those are the kinds of things that the credit rating agencies really like to see, that you have, you know, established formal policies and that you're adhering to those policies as you go forward. So any questions on the general fund side before we switch over to the revenue bond? All right, so on the revenue bond side. All right, so Parkwood Sewer Expansion Project, Phase One is already underway. You've got Phase Two that is going up for bid and should have bids in here soon, in the next couple of months. I think they're estimating that that will cost about $14 million, $10 million of which you plan to use cash for, but that leaves a $4 million difference. So we are working with the city right now to issue a small $4 million revenue bond with a closing timeframe of, of June. And that will be issued through a bank placement, so you've all issued debt before in the public market, but given the size, $4 million, you have, the issuance costs are greatly reduced, and so that would just be placed with a bank, and the time that you sink into the, the actual transactions is much shorter. And then later in the year, we're looking at a potential Phase Three, $15 million. That would be a financing, and that would probably be in the public market based on the interest rates that you can get in the public market versus the bank market. And a $15 million transaction is, can more easily absorb, you know, higher cost of issuance on the front end. So we'll probably be back to you and fall with the, for Phase Three. Just from a coverage standpoint, and just like we looked at some of the metrics on the general fund side, on the debt service for the, for the, on the water side, we look at the metric called debt service coverage ratio, which basically looks at how many times can your net revenues cover your debt service obligations in a given year? So you can see, you've been as high as 4.6 five years ago. Fiscal year 2023, that's been, that was at 2.5 to about two and a half times coverage. You would consider anything 1.75 to two times a healthy level of debt service coverage. So that's, that's good news as you start to look at these, these other projects. So Phase Two, I mentioned, is $4 million. So this just looks at, the blue bars are your existing debt service. The orange on the screen is this new $4 million layered in. We're assuming just a 10-year amortization on this, so since you can afford to do, it's $4 million, so for pretty short time, short term, since we're going to banks, you'll probably get more bank interest at a 10-year amortization versus a 15-year amortization or longer. So that adds to, basically increases your annual debt service from about 6.2 million to about 6.6 million. And then from a coverage standpoint, it, your debt service coverage goes from about two and a half times to about 2.37 times, so not a, a significant impact on your, on your debt service coverage for 4 million. So for Phase Three, we also wanted to look at how that looks layered in. And, you know, that's, that would increase your maximum annual debt service to $7.7 million a year. We've assumed since it's a larger transaction that we're amortizing that over 20 years. I think we would work with finance staff and your rate consultants, determine whether it's in the 20 years or 15 years, or what the right length of time is there. But for now, we just assumed a conservative, you know, 5% interest rate over 20 years. Debt service coverage, that brings it down to about two times coverage. And this is all based on fiscal year 2023 results, so, so I think, you know, pretty conservative approach. And we would say, you know, right now, you're in pretty good shape from a coverage standpoint. This looks to be pretty affordable. And then I think working with the rate consultant, they'll provide more feedback on rate structure and, you know, potential operating impacts of these additional phases as well. And then just to give you a sense of our calendar for this Phase Two, we've already met with the local government commission and let them know the city's plans. There'll be two council meeting actions, one's planned for April 16th, when you'll adopt the preliminary, preliminary findings resolution, and that will basically authorize staff to submit the LGC application. You know, in the month of May, we'll have bids going out, and we'll receive, I guess in April, we'll have the bids going out to, or creative banks going out. We'll receive bids in May. We'll have a second, there'll be a second city council action in May 21st to adopt the final bond order, and that will have all the details, the, the bank that we'll be working with. And all of that will be in place for, and then LGC will then do their approval in June, on June, at their meeting in June, and then we'll close shortly thereafter. And that's when the money will be available. All right, so, other than my disclaimer, any questions on any of that?
Is it possible to print some of these slides?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we have these copies, and, and we can send them out to council as well. One of the things, going back to Mr. Sosa's question, is, you know, this follows right in line with what we presented to council on our bigger projects. The main sewer line, fantastic, we're moving forward. We've made some changes to that process, broken it down into three phases, and you can see how we have debt falling off here soon, and then we'll starting new debt that we're bringing on, which works into that capital planning model well. And then, as we're talking about our sports complex and everything that goes in with that development, we have to figure out how that's going to work from multiple funding sources. So part of that is for us to keep pulling information back and getting it back to Ms. Vittner's team, so we're including all of that into the aspect of that capital planning model. Because if you think about it, when we started the process on this piece of property and development, we thought, maybe we can get 15, 18 million in, then we jumped up to 30, and then 50. When we look at the overall development, as Mr. Sosa pointed out, the $155 million development wasn't on the screen, because we're still in that development planning stages. So as we figure out who those partners are and the percentage of projects that they have to take on, then we'll bring the numbers back. It's hard to, we could sit here and start typing in the numbers on those models, but until we start getting those hard costs, then we don't have that realization. And so we've played that game to this point. We got you up to 50 million, felt that was enough, and then we'll start bringing the others back to let you start making some better decisions as we move forward. So we'll get that out, Mayor, and we'll actually just send that out, if that's okay. We'll send that out to council.
Any questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
It's great having their team on board, so that as we're going through the process, you don't just have us looking at it from one angle, but you have their talent from the other angles. A good job for council for letting this happen.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor, that was the easy part. So if you're ready for the next one.
That's her.
Well, I try to be really sure. But.
Start the time.
Yeah, start the time. But, but really, it's about two things. One is vaping, and the other is, is Delta A, which is, which is THC content. But the thing that I think is really important about these two things is we can talk about, there's 15,000 different varieties of chemicals they're putting into those vapes, and they're unregulated, so we don't know exactly what they're putting into it. There's a lot of discussion over the last several, or last year or so, about these evaping and the, the medical effects that they're having on especially children. If they're using nicotine, sometimes they'll, they'll purchase nicotine on a child, it's much more addictive than it is on an adult. So part of the challenge that, that we have is, one, they're not regulated, they're not against the law, and they are causing some issues. And so what is vaping? I mean, typically, we look at vaping as, as a cigarette alternative, but when we talk about vaping, we talk about a number of other things, too. For example, putting some of these chemicals into different types of candy. We've had a couple incidents at elementary schools where those, those substances have been introduced by a child, and they overdosed on, on THC. So these are, these are important, an important problem in the community, and so we want to look to see if we can basically keep them out of the children's hands. And, whoops, I talked a little bit about that, you know, the acetate that, that's used to, like, when you burn a cigarette, it burns the paper just like it is. But when we use e-vape, what it is, is a chemical reaction. And so a lot of times, they'll put the chemical in to give the chemical reaction to vaporize whatever that substance is, and a number of those things include acetate, which is, which is harmful to the lungs. And E-V-A-L, e-cigarette or vaping associated lung problems has become an issue in a number of communities. And so one of the things we want to do is make sure that, that children don't have access to it. And you can see on that last slide, in 2020, we had about 70 deaths from it. And, and I think, I think those have increased over the last several years. In fact, there's, there's an advocate group in Wilmington that'll come up and talk about how their 15-year-old child died in, in the vaping incident. And this just kind of shows where, you know, they're not targeting these, these types of things like the Skittles and, and candy-colored or candy-flavored vaping. They're not targeting adults, they're targeting children. And so keeping it away from children as much as we can is, is an important thing. We talk about, a, a lot of these vaping stores are located directly across the street from middle schools and high schools, and we want to be able to at least regulate that to keep them out of there. In North Carolina, about 10% of middle schoolers are involved in some type of smoking and 28% in, in tobacco use. Interesting part about it is that, that it was on the decline, was really on the decline, especially among high school students over the last several years. And when they reintroduced vaping as a method to get people from smoking, it took off in, in that age group. And what it's, what it's doing is damaging your lungs, and it's long-term damage, in addition to heart, heart problems and things like that. In addition to heart problems and things like that, that we haven't seen with cigarette smoking until a later age. So it can be dangerous. The other thing I think I need to talk about, when we talk about vaping, we talk about vaping, talk about all those other things that are associated with it. Typically, we don't know what the chemicals are that they're putting into those machines. But the Delta-8, the Delta-9, the Delta-10, which is nothing more than THC, the active ingredient in marijuana. And so, there's really two forms of cannabis. There's hemp and there's marijuana. So we can take Delta-8 or Delta-9 from either one of those. If we take it from marijuana, it's illegal. If we take it from hemp, then it is legal. The problem is, we don't know where it comes from. And the second part of this problem is that one of the things that they're doing is they're manufacturing labs. And again, it's unregulated. So while it says it's supposed to be below .3, the THC level, sometimes we don't know what the THC level is and what they're selling. It can be very high, and what we've seen is that children and young adults are overdosing on the THC. And so, one of the things that we want to do is, again, keep it as far away from the schools as possible, daycares and things like that. And so, we're looking at a number of strategies in order to do that.
So the law specifically says 3.3%?
.3%.
Let me ask you this, have you ever had any occasion where you've had some tested?
Yes, we do. We do that on a very regular basis. But the problem is, is that the state lab doesn't test it. So we have to contract with a private lab in order to do that. And so, it can be quite expensive for us to do that. We have been doing that lately, when we've seized some of this substance in order to make the criminal charges. They go above that .3 limit, and we can charge them with possession of marijuana and things like that.
So in Jackson, we've got over 40 of these type establishments. And because of the public health and safety concern that Chief Yanero just alluded to, you know, we teamed up and started talking about, what can we do to try to eliminate or limit this public health, health, safety concern that we have? The first thing we looked at was, you know, Wake County, they recently have done some things to kind of mirror what some of the towns in Wake County have already done. And you see a list here on the screen of all the different people that have adopted regulations, and then the three at the bottom, Jackson being the fourth one, you know, they're in the process of creating some standards. And so, with that being said, we looked at, well, what are some pros and cons of creating some UDO limitations, some use-specific standards on where these businesses could establish moving forward? Obviously, there's not a whole lot that we can do about the 41, 42 units that are already here, as far as the businesses, they're already here. But what can we do moving forward? So we've listed some pros and cons, and we think that these are important for everybody to kind of consider. But some of the pros for why we want to propose regulations for the city council to adopt as part of the Unified Development Ordinance is to reduce the exposure to youth. And as you'll see on the screen there, the brains continue to develop until they're 25. So if we could try to do something that keeps that out of the school-aged kids, we think that's a positive thing for their health and safety. Chief already mentioned the flavoring and the marketing that goes along with that. Future establishments, we are looking to do things like other municipalities are, spacing from schools, residential zones, city parks, et cetera. There may be others. And then, also to ensure the orderly development of the City of Jackson without the further proliferation of issues. There's quite a few, 41, 42, 43 of these centers.
I got a question here. Have you gotten complaints about people living in these stores? Or do they stay open all night, or what? Because that would be a zoning violation right there, right?
It would be. And I don't know that we've received complaints, but I know that when the fire department does their annual inspections, there have been a handful, one or two, three, that they have seen living quarters set up there, and they've dealt with that accordingly. Some of the cons, obviously, if we make certain changes, then we would be creating non-conformities. And that would allow the business to continue to operate, but they would be deemed non-conforming. Some other impacts would be building owners' ability to rent or use their tenant space. So if we create a spacing standard, say 1,000, 1,500 feet from schools, then that's going to eliminate those tenant spaces from being used for vape shops, et cetera. And then, the last one, and there may be others on the pros and the cons, but we just wanted to kind of point out some highlights here, it would impact the cost to establish these facilities, these businesses, because there's survey work that's going to have to be done, more detailed floor plans potentially, and then city costs through enforcement. So one of the things, as far as our methodology, that we feel it's important is the coming up with a definition, you know, how we define these, because there's some overlap between businesses. So we're going to have to come up with a definition that makes it clear to where it's understandable for everybody. So we're working on that. And then, establish which, if any, districts the use would be allowed, either permitted or special use or prohibited altogether. That would take an amendment to the use table. And I mentioned already, create or amend definitions, and then those use-specific standards, that's where the spacing criteria would be. So with that being said, you know, the chief and I, your staff believes that there's a public health, safety concern with these type businesses. So we are seeking direction of the mayor and council to create a potential Unified Development Ordinance for you to consider. And then, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have as it relates to any of the information we've presented tonight.
I think that's a good idea.
I agree. Well, one thing we have to bring out, I mean, you talked about this planning board, is I mean, minus the health concern, obviously, a lot of the sign violations that we have issues with, and there's a lot of complaints that come from that a lot, because almost none of them follow any of those rules. So that's a whole different cannon worms on top of that, right?
And that's part of all the, if I go back to the con, you know, the enforcement aspect of that.
We just don't allow them to open. You know, I mean, obviously, we care anything about the existing ones, but going forward, we can start eliminating, cleaning some of that up, because I mean, most of them just do what they want.
Right, so one of the strategies that we could look, obviously enforcement for those that may be in violation. But every business is allowed X square feet for their signage. So they could choose to put channel letters on top of the tenant space, or they could decide to put LED lights in the windows. Those are the bright lights that we all see. So if that's a concern, then part of our strategy would be, we need to create some additional standards that say, no LED lights, for example, can be used, or no exposed, whatever it may be. So if that's a concern that the mayor and council has, then we need to basically know that so we can incorporate that into our standards.
Certainly think that by allocation or whatever, it could become a hazard, traffic hazard with the brightness of some of those lights I've seen, you know.
You're right.
Yeah.
Well, another concern I have, and I don't know if we can legally do this, but what about limiting with drive-throughs? I mean, they all love drive-throughs, but the thing that kind of concerns me is most of them also alcohol as well. Is that a concern? You know, because if you can drive through, who's stopping someone to buy beer through the window and then start drinking? You know what I mean? So that's, I mean, that would be a concern, I would think, too, if we could, out of what's possible or legal.
Do you limit the drive-throughs?
Get a limit, where they can't do the drive-throughs. I mean, if you want to go to Circle K and go walk up there, buy what you want, get your car, this one thing, well, at least slow it down a little bit where you're not just going through.
Can there be a specific age requirement to go in these possible new stores? That we can eliminate the age of children specifically not being allowed to go into these stores?
There is an age requirement.
Right now?
There is an age requirement to purchase any of these.
But I'm just saying, like, if a person had their six-year-old or their nephew, a 13-year-old, can there be an age requirement that a 13-year-old cannot go into these stores?
You know, I think, I think that's, I'd be a...
That's something we need to research, I'm not sure. For example, if I want to go to the ABC store tonight and buy a bottle of liquor and have my child with me, as long as I, the adult, were buying it, I don't think that would be my correct...
But if they're middle, but if they're middle school kids...
Kids, until they be, okay, I'll have them.
But again, certainly, individual children should not be in the ABC store nor in the vape shops, as they should be, like you said, there's already on the hook, a prohibition, you have to be at least 18 years old to be in there, unless I would say accompanied by a adult who is there to do business.
I believe the law's 21 to even use the product, buy the product. So I don't know whether that means you've got to be 21 to get in, but like Mr. Carter said, we certainly can look at that and possibly add that to verbiage.
Chief, has any been closed down due to past violations, or how many have been closed down?
We haven't, we haven't closed any yet. We do have some active cases, I think we have eight active cases, and several of them several months ago for underage sales.
I understand the state legislature is looking at some possibilities also as far as limiting the types of merchandise that can be sold.
When it first came out, one of the things that they said was that they would regulate the hemp content, or the hemp, to make sure that marijuana wasn't, marijuana wasn't, wasn't introduced. The problem is, is that we, you know, if we look at the Delta-8 or Delta-9, we don't know if it came from a marijuana plant or it came from a hemp plant. Because it is unregulated. Some states have regulated it by having a commission that seals it and says, this is what it is, this is hemp, this is not marijuana. Our state didn't do that. So I think that the state, in the next several months, is going to put some stipulations on at least the THC, and some of it on the vaping as well. Because the vaping is, you know, we talked about the THC, which is dangerous to, but the vaping is almost as bad because, you know, on that first slide, it talked about mercury, it talked about, you know, all kinds of different lead, and, you know, anything they can use to generate that heat, to generate that chemical reaction, and that's damaging people's bodies, especially young folks that aren't fully developed yet.
I think, you know, until, you know, until it is an illegal product, that, you know, it's a legal business, so, you know, free enterprise and all, I don't think we're in the business of putting out, of putting businesses out of business. However, this is a product that is supposed to be in the hands of adults, not children. And so, proximity to schools, much like we've done with adult content, this isn't a, it's not an X-rated adult product in terms of how you would think of adult products, but it's a product intended for adult use. So if there's something that we can do to separate it, you know, the proximity to schools, middle schools, preschools, high schools, all of them, then that would be something that puts a buffer of safety while we wait on, you know, further, you know, legislation comes out. And there's a better way to determine where products have come from and...
And that would be our intention, to use the adult business kind of as guides.
As a model.
And also looking at what other people have done, really just try to create that buffer from the residential and the schools and the daycares and the parks, to try to create that buffer to keep it out of the hands of the kids.
Some things just don't need to be right in front of them on a regular basis. It's a strong neon colorful suggestion.
Yeah, with the adult businesses, there's only five areas in Jackson that one could operate, and then they have spacing standards on top of that. So we're not talking about going to an overlay district, but we're talking about reducing, based on the buffering component that we use for ABO.
Are there any other communities that are regulating?
Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
We'll have models to pull from from those.
And there's more than this.
Yeah, but have you, have you looked into what they're implementing?
Yes, sir.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there any budget? Or programming that can be added as an educational component to some of the things that maybe we already have going on in schools or with conjunction with the school system, so that kids are informed of the risks and the dangers to try to help mitigate the temptation? Catch my breath?
And actually, you're, the council approved the COSAP plan. We have the COSAP counselor who's in the schools, and she's doing a lot, especially in the middle schools. She's doing a lot of educational classes about vaping and THC. So we're already doing some of that, because it's important. But that first slide that I put up there actually shows that, I mean, I mean, it's not a good picture, but it's very colorful, it's very...
Potentious.
And it's, it's used to market against for kids. It's not, we're not marketing adults with this, we're marketing, we're marketing children.
Not only that, they're now combining the vaping and fentanyl.
Yes, they can.
That's another issue that I'm hearing in the schools now, too.
We've seen a whole lot of fentanyl now?
We still, we're still, we had, I think it was 26 deaths last year.
In the city?
In the city. And I, and...
Did we have to increase our Narcan, like, what we were spending because of the problem?
So the last, the last statistics I pulled, we, the police department, used Narcan 365 times last year. That doesn't count what the fire department did, and when they followed up with those cases.
When Chief Thomas spoke today at Rotary, he was talking about how now all the hotels, I guess, are certified and stuff. Just that's, to me, that's crazy. You didn't have to worry about it.
Again, that was part of the...
Family.
Funding that you... When you all, you all approved those Narcan kits for the hotels, and you also approved them for places like the outreach and the women's center. And so, the officers, I mean, the officers and firefighters are given Narcan every single day. It, I mean, I shudder to think what the death rate would be if they didn't carry that.
You all have any luck on distribution, the distribution end of fentanyl?
We've been working on that, and, you know, part of the discussion that we've had is that it's got to be stopped at the border, because it's coming from, it's coming from China to Mexico, and Mexico into the United States. And they're mixing it with things called, one thing is xylazine. Xylazine is an animal tranquilizer that they're using. And they're using that to, you know, when somebody gets off the high of the opioid, the tranquilizer eases that bad feeling that they have. And so, it's a tranquilizer made for horses. And it's, and it's causing, you know, causing deaths. In fact, there was an article in the paper two weeks ago in Roanoke Rapids, where they were having a tremendous problem with the xylazine mixed with the opioids. The Senate, or the House, or State House, actually will take that up next week and talk about regulating xylazine, because it's not regulated as well.
Go on. I forget what it's called, the stuff that's in the little gummies, what did you call that?
Delta.
Yeah. So what's the holdup on getting that regulated? Why, to me, that seems like a no-brainer, but what's the holdup? Like, why won't people do it?
I can tell you, the real reason was that the hemp farmers had so much control, they were able to, yeah. And they were able to say, we're not going to use hemp, hemp isn't going to be consumed like this. Well, when the bill passed, then they changed their approach. And so, now they're marketing the hemp, the smokable hemp, and the extract from that. And they're also, they're also, they're also selling it that's chemically made, or instead of, instead of extracting it from the cannabis plant, they're manufacturing it in a lab and they're putting it into those. And it's a real problem with us, because the thing that makes it illegal is the content, that .3%.
And you have no idea what the content really is.
Yes, because it's not regulated from the state, there's no way. And so, the only way that we can regulate it is to take the sample, send it to the lab, and determine if it is above that .3 threshold.
Man, you know, as council, when you receive questions about what more can be done, this is how this dialogue came up, where chief's team presented back, because the majority of time, they're on the enforcement side, and we don't get back to the crux of where this starts. And so, between chief and Ryan and Mr. Carter, bringing the team together and talking through this process, it brings it back to council for a potential solution to help... through this process, it brings it back to council for a potential solution to help regulate how the activity can happen within, within the city. And we do that in a lot of different areas, but this gives the council that opportunity to take an action, as Ms. Edwards said earlier, that can choose, uh, some areas where certain things are allowed. And then it may help the police department with the enforcement side because forty-plus businesses that have challenges, that takes a lot of police time. And then the, the negative side of that, it's not the police time, it's the potential deaths and sickness and illness that comes along with these opportunities. A- as you said earlier, uh, having these buildings around our, our kids creates an atmosphere where we seem, we, we seemingly allow that to happen. But you have so many challenges with your zoning within a city and some restrictions that we went back to see what others have used, because we asked that question a lot, like the mayor said, we go back to their ordinances and we're trying to pull the positives from everybody else's and look at their stories. And so we're looking back from the police aspect and the planning aspect. Mr. Carter then has to review at a state level what's legally allowable. What we wanna do is pull the best from what we can get and bring that back to council potentially at the next meeting. So you can consider that to determine if we wanna take a, a next step. Uh, we can't guarantee that what we propose is gonna be an end-all, but what we believe is it's a great next step. It's not a first step because we're very active in, in trying to save people's lives now. But in terms of actions by the council, this gives you a step to be an active player that these other communities have tried. And we just have to see if it's effective or not.
Wheels already been invented, right?
It has. Yes, sir. Our challenge, our challenge will still be, when you create this regulation, as Mr. King said, when you create that regulation, it will create some challenges on building owners because that has been a revenue stream for these individuals because they're tenants. And so we may have those questions from some of our, uh, our building owners that have multiple facilities, but we just have to be ready for that. And we have to talk about that value overall in the community for what we're trying to accomplish. So I wouldn't say this to the council that just by doing this, everybody's gonna say this is a step in the right direction. Because we've seen the other communities have some pushback from some people. As Chief alluded to, he didn't go deeper into how this happens in the state of North Carolina, but we're an agricultural state. It's still the top three industry in the state. And what, what the history shows is the hemp farmers potentially were the tobacco farmers. And so as, as Chief said to other groups, this is a replacement for the cash crop that defined the money that the state has used for decades. That's why it's a challenge. Not just because the lobbyists randomly showed up and they're strong now. The lobbyists have been strong well before North Carolina became a state. So you look back and say, that's a challenge. It's not as easy as saying, we call our delegation, ask them to beat it. It, it goes really deep, but on the local level, this council has the ability to take some action that can have a positive impact on how we allow certain businesses to operate in the city. So I just, there's a, there's a depth to it. And I, I applaud both Chief and Ryan for pulling together and saying, this is something we can present back as a possible solution.
Have you had, Ryan, have you had any, um, like landlords contact to your concerns that maybe got, did, would, would these, um, people wanna go in here? Have you had anybody concerned? They don't care because they get the rent money? Well, we, I mean, this is really the first time that there's been any, this is just coming together and, and so it's not like we've had conversations with, with prospective business owners or the landowners that own these businesses. Obviously with tonight's meeting and then planning board and city council, there'll be a public hearing. So that may happen. They may come to the meeting. They may call you ahead of time and voice their concerns or support. There's a lot of, almost all the new strip centers, I feel like have one in there for the most part. You drive around, look at the newest ones there. They all have a tobacco shop in them.
And that's where, that's where that public hearing has value because we're not presenting this that we're gonna bring it back in six months. We're presenting, we're gonna bring it back hopefully in two weeks for you to consider. And we're not taking a poll. It's not. It's based on the community response to issues that we're having right now. And that's why I say, within this period of time, if we bring this back in two weeks on an agenda, just know, we expect the feedback in the public comments. And that's, that's part of the risk of doing business on this item. And, and I would say that for some of those, you may know some of those building owners that have those strip malls, that have a business inside of there that's paying X number of dollars a month. They, they may call you and you may have two or three. And hopefully you'll be able to have a dialogue with them about why, what we're thinking here. Existing businesses will stay in that area, you know, and then it's not grandfathered in. When they leave, like Mr. King said, that's non-conforming, which means if something happens, they will have challenges to respond. But if they leave, then they can't replace that with the same business if there's a restriction. But the current can stay operating in there unless they're shut down by some other form or function. So that would be the one positive is if a business is there, anything we do now, that business can remain unless something else happens. So this wouldn't be a direct impact.
Kind of what I was getting at is we're not going out to target and close individual businesses. We're trying to provide a measure of safety for students and awareness about the risks and dangers and that physical proximity.
And that's the overall point.
The first big thing we can do is put a buffer there.
Our proposal would not shut any businesses down.
Exactly.
It would make some non-conforming. And therefore, if the business closes, they would then follow the Article Seven in UUDA. So if a business closes, as long as a new business, the same type business goes back in within a hundred and eighty days, then they would be able to pull over and do that. If the business changes the type of business, let's say they go from a vape hookah shop to a barber car, a barbershop, then that hundred and eighty days is done. As soon as they've made that change, then any future would have to be the standards, whatever that may be. Spacing, separation from others, all of the standards that we will propose before you. What about just a change in ownership? They would be able to do that all day long. That we wouldn't, we will not be closing them.
Gotcha.
They're allowed to stay open.
So there's still a lot of mechanism for people to maintain their current business strength if they own one or multiple buildings. There will just be challenges if you go outside of that allowable length of time. So I'd just say that's the kind of comments and discussions you would have with any building owners if they, if they ask those questions. And we'll be ready to have that, um, response back at the meeting, mayor, in public comment, after public comments, uh, we'll have those responses.
I spoke to a commissioner today and he said they're bringing up this month and their meetings as well to talk about this. And I'll be on the counties, because there's a lot in the county as well.
There's thirty, I think, thirty.
Thursday at their workshop, yeah.
There's thirty-one in the county.
There's, oh, wow.
There's seventy, seventy-some countywide.
I thought there'd be more in the county than that.
There must be a heck of a profit blowing out of it.
Well, it, it's, and part of it is vaping was, was portrayed as something safe that you could do than cigarettes.
Yeah.
And, uh, and so, so I think, I think some people have, um, have. Well, I, I think they use that to, um, to, to make a profit and, and just put whatever they want to in, in those things. And that's, that's what, because it's not regulated, they can put anything they want, basically.
We just need consensus.
We just need to know, yeah.
Yes. Draft something for us to review. Sounds like that to me.
And one of the things Council also mentioned about the signage, if there's something specific that you want us to kinda add to that, it'd be nice to have some direction on what that, what the concern is so that we can try to draft something.
Definitely need to tone down that brightness. Yeah, that's a.
Well, what about like paraphernalia they sell in the stores? Is that, how's that go against law?
What do you say?
The paraphernalia they have in the stores, I mean.
That, that, that horse has been ridden many times and there really hasn't been a lot done about it. Uh, you're talking about like papers and packs and head shops and stuff like that?
Yeah. The challenge is, is that they, when we go to court on those paraphernalia cases, you have to have some proof that it was used for an illegal substance. And so if I'm, if I'm rolling tobacco with, with papers, it becomes really difficult to, to actually prosecute those cases. But, uh, but we're, we'll, we'll continue to look at those places and continue to do any, any enforcement that we can.
Has the base started call, um, calling though any, any of those areas off limits yet? That you know of? Any particular ones?
Actually, some of them are off limits because we went, we sort of went through this with the spice.
Right.
And, and the same places that are operating, that were operating as, uh, places when they were using spice and, uh, bath salts are the same ones that are operating now.
Is all dropped off?
No, they're still on the, they're still on the, uh, the list. So, and we're, we're, we've had some discussion with NCIS about expanding that list as well.
We got it, right?
Yes.
We'll get on it. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll tell you, with those two items, uh, those are two great, uh, presentations from, for council tonight. And those are big picture items, but they're also day-to-day of what you, you have to focus on. It rolls us right into, to our one city moment. And I'll just, I say it again, the ability of staff and, and this team here to listen and respond is incredible on a lot of these issues. So I, you just go back to the value of listening to the community and having that input and being able to respond. It's impressive because you don't get this in every community. And I just say it again, um, even for, that's the fewest slides Chiefs ever put together. I really think DC Weaver put them together. I don't know for a fact, so I won't go there. But, uh, but the concept there is we've gotta, we've gotta do what we can to make an impact so that everybody else has a chance. If you go back a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Jackson pointed out that the YMCA Youth and Government Convention that was held in Raleigh, um, he mentioned this in his report, but we wanted to share the group that, the local group that went there. And I think he mentioned the names, but, um, we have names here and you see the individuals. Um, I think all of these were sophomores at Jacksonville High School. Uh, Jackson Kaiser, Adam Stanley, Jackson Bridges, Teddy Taylor, and Gabby Dimitrova. That's. If Gabby's listening, I hope that's how we pronounce your name. So, uh, Gabby, thank you.
Mr. Lamont Singleton.
But this is, uh, there you go. And so also inside of here, um, Mr. Singleton here on the, on the right side, uh, this is that group that Mr. Jackson had presented. And we wanted to add that because part of what we're talking about on these, both of these topics tonight is how we engage our community. If we're not engaging our youth in activities, then we're allowing them that time to be engaged in other activities. And this trip, not to mention, this is a great group, but it's a, a sharply dressed, uh, talented group of people that I would say presented very well.
Especially that fellow on the left.
I can't tell you about that person, Mayor. I just know he looks good.
Young man in the middle, Corey Gross, he's actually assistant, uh, district attorney for Region Two, but he's a volunteer.
Which one is that?
Uh, the guy that doesn't have a title, right in the middle.
And so he's the coach, you said. Assistant District Attorney, coach for this group. And so then when you go to this next slide, and I can't point anybody out in order, but, um, we, Mr., we did get names. We already mentioned Mr. Lamont Singleton. Uh, we also had Connor Shanta?
Yes.
Corey Gross. And as he, as he mentioned, Corey Gross is the assistant, is an assistant district attorney. So intermixed with some of the other folk that we see there. And then other members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority and Tau Omega Omega Chapter from Jacksonville. All that, they're there as well. So when you're talking about community members being present, this is, this is incredible. This is what we do when we're trying to draw attention to , uh, positive things within the community. And Mr. Jackson got in both pictures.
And the young.
I do that too.
Yeah, you do. The young man, the tall young man there, he's actually, uh, Cooper. I can't remember his last name, but he's the student governor of North Carolina. So he's Governor Cooper.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but he's in Wilmington and he's willing to come up here and talk about that Youth and Government program.
Very impressive.
Yeah, I was very impressed. They ran most, they ran the meetings and the adults was there to facilitate. It was incredible.
Awesome process. And that's where we talk about this engagement and things that we're doing with our youth council and the things that we're doing with our high schools and with our teen center coming online. Just very exciting to see these activities. So I think the tie-in, which you brought up a couple of weeks ago, great timing as we look at what we can do to provide some avenues for, uh, for success. Follow-up, we refilled the Freedom Fountain last week. Our fire department came back to put the water in because as you know, we've had some challenges with getting parts in to fix the Freedom Fountain. So if you know anyone that's been concerned about it, I encourage you to, to call them, let them know that we're up and running. Uh, we're still doing a little bit of work, but pretty soon we're gonna have the Freedom Fountain back. One of the things that we tell our folks when they start new hires, that the Freedom Fountain is symbolic of who we are, not only as a city team, but as a community. And that's, that's who we are as one C, as Jacksonville. And having the fountain up and running, it means something to all of us. And, and you see that, um, when you see the team out, not only building maintenance services, uh, their team out, but when you see the fire department pull up with a truck to make sure that it has water after we've had to drain it. It's an awesome symbol of our community and, and something I hope people can appreciate. Uh, we're working on it. It's gonna be back up and running completely. And we're very excited to, to have it going.
Do we have an ETA for full function?
I thought it was alright today. Was it not running today?
It's running. Uh, there's some lighting measures, but I think it's.
They still, you finished completing the programming on the lighting and that, so we can change the colors and that. They've, they've added another event there with the.
Look at that. There's your live feed right there, by the way.
What are our hours of hot light on the fountain?
It was a twenty-four.
It's about twenty-four hours.
Well, not all of the lighting and everything runs at this point. Uh, once we get everything up and finalized again, then it'll run twenty-four. As far as I know, Mayor, I think it runs twenty-four seven.
I know they're for a while. It's just running part, part time.
And that was part of that issue with the, uh, the lack of replacement parts. And the last thing I have, Mayor, is the annual pickleball tournament. I'm not sure if anyone in this room competed in this tournament, but I can tell you that we had, um, over, um, I thought we had over four hundred people competing. You see anything from eighteen to eighty in our tournament. Um, what a great turnout again this year and having this facility. What I can tell you, when we talk about creating new centers and complexes, at this point in history, I, I believe no matter what size facility we build, we could fill it with pickleballers from around the region, not just in the state. Because it's, because it's incredible of, um, the number of people we have turnout. We actually limit just for the space and the turnout. But to have this atmosphere, if you've not been there before, I encourage you to check it out. Pickleball goes on every single week around the community, whether it's at the Commons or Jack Amyette, we're playing pickleball. Uh, and having the indoor facilities is a, is a great add to have, uh, traffic in and out, uh, for the facility. So except for a lot of us.
Somebody called pickleball.
I don't play pickleball yet, Mayor. I don't wanna get over there with that group. So it's gotta have some rhyme or reason. I, I didn't forget, we do have the National Night Out Awards, um, that, uh, we added. So some of the people in this room were able there to, uh, have the National Night Out twenty-twenty-three awards. We're glad to add the mix. Um, looks like you guys have taken pictures before. Um, awesome to be there because if you remember, the National Night Out is, I'm, I'm gonna say it's our biggest event as a community. It's not just one night and the purpose is completely be involved within the community from multiple angles. And being down at, at Riverwalk, that area is an asset to the community. So awesome to have another great event and to be recognized for, uh, multiple years of high-quality service to our, to our community. There you go, Mayor. Ran out of slides.
I got, uh, we've had some issues that have come up, uh, and some, some of the twenty-four and, uh, Marine Boulevard also in Georgetown. You know, we've heard some concerns and I, I've, I've been thinking this out and I've been discussing it with some of the, with John and others, uh, about setting up two committees, ad hoc committees to, to try to address or look at solutions and possible avenues that we could do to make things a little bit better and to try to, try to, uh, zero in on some of these things.
Let's talk a little bit more.
Go right ahead.
Know what I'm saying? Cause I know.
You and I are gonna talk.
Yeah, let's talk a little bit.
But right now, uh, my plan is, uh, for, on the Georgetown end, uh, you and Cindy doing this. Uh, and the other thing is this is gonna have to be during daylight hours when our staff is working because of overtime issues. Of course, we don't wanna make anybody have to work overtime. Uh, Logan, you and, uh, Bob Ward on the Boomtown or whatever that is.
Marine Boulevard.
Marine Boulevard, it was Marine Boulevard. What we're looking for. What we're looking for is, is what we can do, okay? But for right now, we'll discuss it more in its entirety before you take off. So with that, entertaining motion. Good, Jerry.
Second.
All the favors signify and say aye.